Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this January 13th, 2020 council meeting in order. We have several guests here this evening. As you can see, we have a full house and hopefully, maybe you guys want to come back every time, I'm not sure. We have Cub Scout Pack, Cub Scout Pack 3514, whose leader is Shawn Campbell, and they're out of the Prince of Peace Evangelical Church. And we also have Cub Scout Pack 3507, whose leader is Denny Westfall, and we have Den number one of three known as the Arrow of Light. So I'd ask all the Scouts to come up at the front right microphone here to lead us into Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. And then, once all you guys get there, and women, you can lead us out, lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hazeltime.
Present.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here. Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minute of the regular meeting of December 9th, 2019, and the organizational meeting of 1/7/2020, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the approval of the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening and had several items on the agenda that'll be in the next council meeting. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're planning on having a Health, Safety, and Sanitation meeting just prior to our next Finance meeting on January 27th, so it'll either be at 5:00 or 5:30. And it's just going to be an update from the Sanitation Department. I know, Mr. Pacoli, I haven't talked to you about it yet, but the Sanitation Department, the Fire Department, and the Parks Department for their upcoming projects and plans for 2020. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meetings scheduled. I have two things that, one, I'm working on the, some background work on the, on the issue of medical marijuana with city employees, and secondly, we will have a meeting sometime in the near future on the, on the discussion about feeding wild animals.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report and we have no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazeltime.
I defer to Councilman Simpson on this one, as I was not at the last meeting.
I believe there is some, an ordinance on, on the agenda tonight for, for, for the, no, there's not. Okay. It's the next meeting. The water rate increases was talked about at the last, last meeting that's going to take effect in July. We probably will not, Mrs. Hazeltime's going, she's chairperson of, of the Water and Utilities Commission. She's going to be out of town towards the end of the month, so we'll probably schedule a meeting sometime in February, just so the Finance Department, Mr. Pacoli, and Mr. Patton can give us updates and plans for Water and Utilities for the year of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meetings scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Wait.
Request for council action first.
I got ahead of myself.
You got kind of rusty here.
I am. This is first thing back, so we're a little rusty still, but requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 20001 Probation Officer Status Change for the CCA Grant for Muni Court, 20002 Expenditure Over $15,000 for SIPCA Architects for the Building Department, 20003 Expenditure Over $15,000 for Duber Architectural for the Building Department, 20004 2020 Tax Advance Request, 20005 Adopt Sexual Offenders Policy for the MCRC, 20006 Expenditure Over $15,000 for ProTech Security for the Police Department, 20007 Contract for the Gap Conversion CAFRA Report for the Ray and Associates, 20008 Fiscal Year '18 CHIP Grant Rehab for 1843 Brookshire Drive in Brunswick, 2009 PLC Upgrades for Water Pump Stations and Towers, 2010 Amend Salaries and Benefits Code, Reclassify Account Clerk 2 to Accounts Payable Clerk, 2011 2020 Material Bids for the Service Director, 2012 Grant Application for Project 1063 Airport Remark Airfield, 2013 Task Order Number Three for Delta Airport Consultants for Project Number 1063, the airport, 2014 Expenditure for Lake County Sewer Co., Street Department, and finally, 2015 Expenditure for Signal Service Co. for the Street Department. Now, reports from municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, welcome back to council. The parking deck construction has ceased for the winter, as you can see. No activity out there for the last six weeks. The long-term lots are available in the city at the Castle Noel Parking, what's called the Feckley Lot, which is on the north side of Time Two on South Court Street, the County Courthouse Parking Deck, and the County Administration Lot Extension off of East Liberty Street. The parking lot on West Liberty between, or I'm sorry, parking lot between West Liberty and West Washington with the Huntington Bank Drive Thru has some all-day parking as well as some limited parking behind Town Square Commons. The Municipal Court Lot across the street is available on the weekends and evenings, and three-hour lots were established at the open areas of the lot between Sully's and Porter's, as well as the majority of the lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty Street. We've added a couple customer parking spots on West Friendship Street adjacent to the Historical Society, as well as two handicap spaces outside of the northwest doors of City Hall near the intersection of Friendship and North Elmwood. The utility drop boxes in the post office that were at the City Hall Parking Lot were moved to the Muni Court Lot and will likely remain there even once the deck is completed. The mini library was placed at the three-hour lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty Street. And then, a number of upcoming events in, in our community. On Monday, January 20th, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a Martin Luther King Celebration at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church, which is located at 400 North Broadway Street, and the public is welcome to attend. The Healthy Business Council of Ohio awarded Healthy Medina, or Healthy Ohio Worksite Awards, and the City of Medina received a gold award for employers with 300 or less employees. Those awards will be given out on Thursday, January 23rd in Columbus, and I will go down for the luncheon to accept that word, award on behalf of the city. On Sunday, January 26th, at 2:00 PM, the Medina Community Band will have their winter concert at Medina High School Middle Auditorium. The address is 777 East Union Street, and again, this is free, a free event for the public. They do a great job with that. And last but not least, the annual Four Chaplain Service will be held on Wednesday, February 5th at 7:00 PM, and this year, it's at St. Francis Xavier Church, which is 606 East Washington Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are several items on the agenda, and the water rate increase, it'll be next time, that originated with Finance when we got that notification from Avon. I'll discuss those when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Lieutenant Burke Beckler, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report tonight. First off, I wanted to thank all the community that came out to our open house on Saturday at the Rec Center. It was a great event with a large number of people who took advantage of the free day we offered and the festivities. We also had a food drive for Feeding Medina County from 9:00 to 2:00, where each food item brought in was a free entry into the facility, so we collected 275 pieces of, or food, food items for the Feeding Medina County. Then, I also wanted to thank the Medina Sunrise Rotary and Costco for helping to sponsor the event, and the next Rec Advisory Committee meeting will be this Thursday, January 16th at 7:30 AM at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rurley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note. I just wanted to mention that we were recently notified by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources that we have received grant funding through the Clean Ohio Trails Fund for the East Reagan Parkway Multipurpose Path Connector Trail. That's going to be the addition of .42 miles of 10-foot-wide asphalt trail on the south side of East Reagan Parkway from Larkin's Way to North Court Street that will link our existing multipurpose trails from Lake Medina all the way to the Business District along US 42 from Finn Road to Harding. So, we're pretty excited about that project. It's approximately $260,000 with the grant covering $195,000 of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little update. We have an intersection upgrade going on at South Elmwood and Lafayette. This won't require any kind of road closures and should only take a week or two to complete, but we do appreciate everyone's patience, cooperation of traveling through that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. And just for the Scout certification, Mr. Pacoli's in charge of the streets, so when it snows, he's make sure the streets are cleared so that you can go to school. So, when the meeting's over, you might want to go thank him for all his hard work to enable you to go to school on a regular basis.
But fear not, boy Scouts. There'll be some snow days before this winter's over.
Well, not if Mr. Pacoli can help it, so. We'll have to see how that works out. Okay, motion by council to authorize a designee for public records training?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'd like to move to designate Clerk of Council Kathy Patton, Texas Mayor, and Council's Designee to attend public records training as required by Section 149.43 and 109.43 of the Ohio Vice Code.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next, we have council, confirmation of council appointments. We have several. If there's no objection, I would like to take them all at once. Here are no objection. We have the Audit Committee, Bert Humple, for the Accounting Representative, for a term expiring 12/31/23. Bruce Gold for a Business Rep, for a term expiring 12/31/23. For No Waka, we have Patrick Patton for a term expiring for 12, 2020 as an alternate, and we have Robert Patrick for a term of 2020 for Wadsworth. TID Representative, we have Patrick Patton for the year 2020, and Nino Pacoli for the year 2020 as the alternate. And we have McDAC Board, we have Chief Ed Kinney for the year 2020 as an alternate, and for the strategic plan objectives and for goals, we have Jessica Hazeltime.
Move to confirm the council appointments?
Second.
Any discussion on the confirmation of the council appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notices, communications, and petitions, we have two of them, two liquor permits, not to object to the issuance of a new D2 and D3 permit to Echelon Independent Living Operations, LLC, doing business as Echelon Independent Living at 629 North Huntington Street.
Move not to object?
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And the second liquor permit we have is not to object to the issuance of a new C1 and C2 permit to First Floor Exchange LLC, doing businesses 1904 Brew's at 320 South Court Street, Suite 101.
Move not to object?
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the Chair, and a reasonable time of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Scouts, anybody? Any scout? No? It's your chance. All right. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 1-20, an ordinance amending Section 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Recreation Center Aquatics Manager Pay Grade.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request to decrease the aquatic manager's starting pay grade from a 13A to an 11A. We had decreased the pay a few years ago. Instead, if the position became vacant again, we would reduce it again to have it more in line with the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association salary ranges for this position. The aquatics manager retired as of January 3rd, so this is the time we'd like to make the change. We hope to have the position filled sometime in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? The clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Resolution 3-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 4-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2020 Concrete Payment General Services Program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This program we've used historically in the past primarily for our sidewalk repairs program, and we also use it for emergency pavement repairs as necessary.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Resolution 3-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 4-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2020 Concrete Payment General Services Program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This program we've used historically in the past primarily for our sidewalk repairs program, and we also use it for emergency pavement repairs as necessary.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 4-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 5-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayors to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs, for consultant services and award a contract for the creation of a new comprehensive plan for the City of Medina.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the, our current city's comprehensive plan is about 12 years old. Much has changed in the City of Medina between 2007, when it was enacted, and 2019, when we started this process to update it. Now, in order to understand the path the community wants to for the next 10 to 15 years, a new comprehensive plan is the best way to consolidate and express the community's needs and desires. Therefore, we've gone through a process of having it, having this process and idea vetted through the Special Legislation Committee of City Council, then to Finance Committee on December 19th, or December 9th, rather, I'm sorry, meeting. And your RCA, it has a kind of outline of the potential process. This is another, today, this evening is another step in the process, so I would recommend that we get this moving so we can kind of get this set up for the policy for the city going forward for the next 10 to 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is going to be in Special Legislation Committee, so Mr. Lamb, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. The comprehensive plan is, is, is a singular, singularly important plan for the city in order to operate generally over a long period of time, and it has a real impact on decisions that we make or what we consider when we make the decision. So, as the Planning Director so well noted, it is a little bit past time. We recognize to do it. City Council and the administration had a discussion, responsible discussion over a number of months, and came to the conclusion that we'd move forward, and I'm pleased that we are, we are passing this tonight, and the process will be in place, and we'll, well, the bids, once the bid's accepted, and we can move forward and get this developed for the city, so it will stand as a, as a good guide for the city for a number of years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the Scout certification, we have a comprehensive plan that we're going to adopt. That's usually a long-term range plan of 10 years or so that we look at throughout the various areas of the city and the zoning related to the city in those areas, and then also, we have a strategic plan that we adopt that gives us goals and tasks that we have to work towards to help achieve the comprehensive planned framework that we have. So, when you go through school, you'll learn about those different kind of planning and strategic plans and what you do and why you need them. So, even the governments have to have those that give us guidance on a consistent basis to help us make our decisions. So, hopefully, you'll learn that when you go through school. Any other discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of your ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 5-20 passes 7-0.
Resolution 6-20, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance from the Ohio History Connection for a certified local government grant.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel? Discussion? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a grant program that is available through the State Historic Preservation Office. It's called Certified Local Government. It's kind of related to places, to communities that have historic preservation staff and regulations on the books that help preserve important history and heritage of the city. This application would be used, we would be in partnership with Heritage Ohio, which is a private nonprofit that manages Main Street programs in the state of Ohio. This is in order to do an old house fair in the city of Medina. The city of Medina has to be the applicant, but we can assign a third-party administrator, and that would be Heritage Ohio. They're looking to help fund about $5,000 of a $10,000 to $15,000 plan cost for home old house fair here in the city of Medina. So I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 6-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 7-20, an ordinance authorizing expenditure not to exceed $66,500 to Epic Aviation LLC for the purchase of Jet A Fuel at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The amount here is based on what we've spent in past years, but as usual, I want to issue my typical warning. Fuel prices obviously fluctuate. We resell this fuel, so if the price goes up, we'll have to pay more for it, but we will make more for selling it. It'll come out in the wash.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 7-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 8-20, an ordinance amending Section 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to accepting a revised job description for the police administrative assistant.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Lieutenant Brooke Beckler?
Thank you, Mr. President. With a pending retirement of our current administrative assistant, we took a look at all her tasks, duties, and responsibilities that she currently has, and realized a number of them are not on the current job description. So we are asking council to approve the job, the updated job description for what the task that position actually does.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 8-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 9-20, an ordinance amending Section 15301C of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Civil Service Commission.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mayor Hamill?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request to increase. We have three civil service commissioners. We split the task of the Civil Service Commission with Medina City Schools, and they're responsible for the hiring of all civil service positions, both in the city of Medina and Medina City Schools. So the pay for these commissioners, they meet at least once a month. There are times when questions come up between the meetings or an emergency meeting needs to be held, and they're paid individually $500 annually for those meetings. This rate of $500 was established by ordinance 27405, which passed in 2005. And the previous compensation before that was $300 annually, which was passed in 1978. So I took that $500 because it had not been increased for a significant period of time, and placed that $500 into an inflation calculator, and that would equate to today's dollars of $658, almost $659. And therefore, we're respectfully requesting council to increase it from $500 to $650, which with three commissioners is an actual increase annually of $450 between the three of them. And the carryforward in the civil service budget will cover this so that we don't need an increase in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
I'm sorry, just one more thing. We'd like to make it effective January 1st. I don't need the emergency clause, but that the pay rate starts January 1st of this year.
Is there any objection to the modification for effectiveness of January 1st, 2020?
I think it's already in the order?
I thought it was.
All right, Mayor, you're covered on that.
I think it is.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 9-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 10-20, an ordinance amending the agreement with Lafayette Township Trustees for Community Policing Law Enforcement Services and its jurisdiction.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a clarification that the, what they will pay us is the net proceeds of their levy. Just clarifying that.
Okay. Any comments or discussion?